Good morning. It's August 5, 2025, and you're at the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors meeting. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Michael Douglas from Advancing Vibrant Communities.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on nation, under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for those who serve on the dais here. Thank you for the sacrifices that they and their families make to serve us and serve our county. Lord, we ask that you would give them great discernment and wisdom today as they chart the course for our county in the future and for our communities. We pray for prosperous business communities and for peace and safety in our neighborhoods as well. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, first up on the agenda is presentations. We're going to be honoring employees with 25 years of service, 30 years of service, and 35 years of service. First up is Heather Duval, recognizing Ruth Inge.
Good morning. I'm going to have Ruth come down here. Good morning again. I'm very happy today to congratulate Ruth Inge on 25 years of service to Stanislaus County. Ruth's career with Stanislaus County has spanned over various departments. She started as an admin clerk, too, with Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, spent 11 years with the Auditor, Controllers, and Clerk Recorder's Office before finding a home in Human Relations at HSA in 2014. Ruth is invaluable to our Human Relations Department, an absolute savant with an Excel sheet. She built and has maintained the data and tracking sheets that HR uses daily to support the Health Services Agency. Ruth's experience and wealth of knowledge keeps HR moving smoothly while new members are finding their feet. She's always quick to offer a useful tip or helpful advice. Ruth has spearheaded several key HR projects during her time with the county. She has created the Position Control Sheet, which is utilized by managers across the Health Services Agency to keep track of all employees' position date, both vacant and filled. She successfully helped keep track of all the department running while saving a large number of employees' records from the scenic floods of 2016 and 2017. During the pandemic, Ruth was responsible for the creation and implementation of our COVID-19 vaccine verification tracking system, which houses our-- ensuring our healthcare workers' safety. She assisted with clinic closures and staff reassignments, built our current new employee orientation presentation, which she keeps updated, quickly brought HR up to 100% compliance after most recent I-9 audit, and so many more little tasks and assignments that keeps HSA HR running smoothly and the well-oiled machine that it is. She has done so much during 25 years with the county, but when asked what she is most proud of, her first and most honest response was, "I'm proud of being such a part of such a good team." On a personal level, Ruth is an avid and eclectic concert goer, be it country, pop, or metal. If a band played locally, Ruth has the concert team. She's a foodie and a Raiders fan, a loving mother and devoted friend. She's a cheerful and helpful coworker. Ruth is an integral to our team's operation, and we are grateful to have her. Please join me in congratulating Ruth on 25 years of commitment to county service. We appreciate all that you do every day.
Ruth, thank you so much for your time and dedication to the people of Stanislaus County. Really, the thing we can say is thank you. What was the last concert you went to?
Oh, George Street, Chris Stapleton.
Oh, all right. The king, the king. Thank you so much for your 25 years of service to the people of Stanislaus County. Would you like to say a few words?
Just thank you for being a great place to work for. We've got a great team and a lot of great people out there. Thank you.
Oh, I get to stay. So as many of you know, I'm a fairly new department head, and this is one of the things that I was most looking forward to. It's so wonderful to have such a tremendous amount of people that have been dedicated and stayed with the Health Services Agency, and Sandy is a great example. 25 years, all with the Health Services Agency and all with vital records. So today, I'm so pleased to take a few moments to recognize and celebrate someone who has been a steady and dedicated presence at the Health Services Agency and vital records for the past 25 years, Sandra Terrell. Sandy is committed to accuracy, compassion, professionalism, and has helped ensure that some of life's most important milestones, births and deaths, are documented with care and dignity. Over the past 25 years, as I said, all with vital records, Sandy grew professionally and has served as a supervising account admin clerk for the past few years. In the last fiscal year alone, Sandy and her team processed more than 5,300 death records and more than 9,900 birth records. We estimate that during your career, Sandy, you've assisted community members with important documents for nearly 132,500 deaths and 250,000 births. Sandy has provided consistent service not only to our community but also to her colleagues, always bringing calm, thoughtful presence and incredible work ethic. Your colleagues have submitted a few remarks to let you know what you mean to them. One wanted to take a moment to sincerely thank you for your invaluable knowledge, guidance, and mentorship you've provided. Your support has made a meaningful difference in her professional growth, and she's truly grateful for the opportunity to learn from you. Congratulations on reaching such an incredible milestone of 25 years of dedicated service. Your commitment, leadership, and kindness has had a lasting impact on so many people. Another adds, while you are a fantastic teacher with a great sense of humor. You've been incredibly patient as we learn complex systems, and you always make the process enjoyable through support. And finally, your manager adds that she is grateful that these essential county services are under your leadership. You've built something special during your time with the GSA, leading with humor and compassion. You're always willing to learn new things and to stand up for community members that you serve. Your leadership was never more evident than during the height of the COVID pandemic, when the expanded need for timely processing of death records and burial permits were strained at the capacity of the team, both physically and mentally. Thank you for guiding us through these difficult times, and we so look forward to however long you're willing to continue to give us. 25 years is more than a milestone. It's a testament to your loyalty, your expertise, and your heart for public service. On behalf of the Health Services Agency, thank you for your years of hard work and dedication. We are so grateful to have had you as part of our work family. Congratulations.
Sandra, thank you so much for your leadership, your time, your effort, your loyalty to Stanislaus County, and your service to the people of Stanislaus County. We really appreciate it. On behalf of the entire board, we just want to say thank you. It sounds like you keep track of a lot of important information. Thank you so much. Would you like to say a few words?
Actually, I would. Thank you. Thank you. So I just really want to recognize the board for the honor. Thank you very much. Public health has just been amazing. Got great people in public health. And then, of course, our vital records rock stars. Love them, love them for their continued dedication and support. And then, of course, to my family, my son Jason and his fiancee Elise. And then, of course, my husband, who is my rock and my person. So thank you.
Jose, you're next.
So, good morning, Chairman Condit, members of the board, CEO Hayes, and Chief County Counsel Bose. Today, we're here to talk about Maria Profeta and celebrate her 25 years with the county. She began her career in April of 2000 at the Community Services Agency as a family service specialist, working in TANF, Welfare to Work, Medi-Cal, and CalFresh. Always a hard worker, Maria was promoted the following year to FSS II and promoted again to FSS III in 2004. Maria was promoted to Social Worker II and transferred to the Department of Aging and Veteran Services in 2007, where she found her professional passion, assisting older adults by providing services that help them maintain healthy and independent lives. As a Social Worker II, she worked case management in the Linkages Program, Information and Assistance, and the Family Caregiver Respite Program. Maria continued to serve older adults and their caregivers as a Social Worker until 2014, and then she was promoted to Staff Services Analyst and coordinated the Health Insurance Counseling and Advocacy Program, otherwise known as HICAP. And that's where she became the subject matter expert extraordinaire. At that time, I was at CSA adult programs, and my staff and I knew that if we had a client with Medicare issues, we needed to set her up with Mariette HICAP. In October of 2023, Maria was then promoted to Manager II at Aging and Veteran Services, where she now oversees the HICAP program as manager, as well as overseeing the Senior Meals Program, Family Caregiver Program, SNAP Ed, Information and Assistance, and Case Management. Maria is known for her work ethic, her willingness to take on new projects, and her excellent people and customer service skills. And I already knew this from working with her all these years, but Maria has had these great performance evaluations, and they all echo the same themes: excellent rapport with clients and staff, a can-do attitude appreciated by all, and a self-starter, not afraid to pitch in when needed. So Maria is not only an amazing colleague, but she's also a mother, wife, sister, grandmother, aunt, and just wonderful friend. She's a vibrant individual who approaches each day with unwavering positivity. She has demonstrated remarkable grace in difficult situations, skillfully balancing her clients and staff's needs. A key member of our team, Maria consistently demonstrates reliability, embraces new challenges, believing that teamwork is both a strength and a personal philosophy. Thank you for your 25 years of service, Maria.
Hi, Maria. I've gotten to work with Maria on the Commission on Aging, and I tell you, she's a constant professional, always has the right answers or direction to look. I really appreciate your time and just want to say on behalf of the entire board, thank you for your 25 years. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. I'd truly like to say thank you to Chair Condit, the Board of Supervisors, our CEO Jody Hayes, and of course, my Director, Jose Michelle, along with my team at Aging and Veteran Services, and all of the people that helped me to get here. I am truly honored and blessed to have been made it this far for 25 years. Just all of the extraordinary people that I've met along the way that have helped me build my career to where I'm at now. This was my goal when I first started 25 years ago. I just wanted to see how long I could go. So hopefully, continue to be able to serve the community, because it's really the community members, our older adults, that just give me this passion to be able to continue my life. So, thank you all.
All right, next up is Jeff Leggero, our District Attorney.
Good morning, Chair Condit, members of the board, CEO Hayes, County Counsel Bose. It's my honor and pleasure to be here this morning to recognize Chief Deputy District Attorney Michael Houston and his 30 years of service with Stanislaus County. Michael Houston started his first day with the county on Monday, April 5, 1995, and has been with the District Attorney's Office for the entire 30 years of his county career with a very brief assignment with Child Support Services. Michael started out in the misdemeanor unit. One of his cases was a high-profile case that made the Modesto B and involved a defendant illegally snagging sturgeon in the West County. We take this very seriously here in Stanislaus County. After the misdemeanor unit, he was assigned to the preliminary hearing team, where he honed his skills in prosecuting felony cases. He was then assigned to various vertical units. These are units that handle specific types of cases from start to finish. These vertical assignments included the Stanislaus County Drug Enforcement Unit, Crimes Against Children Unit, Career Criminal Prosecution Unit, Vehicle Theft Unit, and the Child Abduction Unit. Not only has Michael successfully prosecuted murder cases, three-strike, serious and violent felony cases at trial, he has appeared at numerous lifer hearings and successfully argued against the release of numerous dangerous defendants that would threaten the residents of Stanislaus County. In February 2021, Michael was promoted to Chief Deputy District Attorney, where he has been in charge of the misdemeanor unit, and currently supervises the juvenile unit, the vehicle theft unit, and two criminal calendar departments. In addition, he is the office's Brady Chief, and he is responsible for collecting and creating information related to the prosecution's constitutional, statutory, and ethical duties to disclose favorable evidence to the defense. Michael is also the office's liaison with the local defense bar and the criminal courts. He attends a monthly court-hosted criminal justice partner meetings as the office's representative to discuss issues related to the effective administration of the criminal justice system in Stanislaus County. Michael's legal knowledge and expertise make him an incredible resource for the office and our attorneys. He also enjoys sharing his experience with his students. For the past 14 years, Michael has taught criminal justice at Kaplan College, Breitwood University, and he's currently teaching at Stanislaus State Interpol. His classes have included ethics, constitutional law, criminal justice, and juvenile justice. His students routinely recognize him for his engaging teaching style and appreciate his experience. Throughout his 30-year career with the county, Michael has always strived to make the county he has lived in since 1995 a better and safer community for all county residents. He continues to ethically and conscientiously prosecute cases and promote justice with integrity. I'm very proud to have Michael as one of my chief deputies, and more importantly, proud to call him my friend for the past 20 years. Michael is married to his wife Jennifer, who's here today. They have raised two amazing daughters, Emily, who's in the Navy--
Go Navy, beat Army!
--and the other is completing her master's degree in psychology at Fresno State University. That's Samantha.
Go Bulldogs!
Michael is also a movie aficionado and can often pull from memory an appropriate movie quote for just about any occasion. He's also a loyal Cowboy fan. I think that's good. Again, thank you, Michael, for your outstanding service to Stanislaus County and the District Attorney's Office. And we are here to congratulate you and thank you for your 30 years.
Man, Michael, you were sounding so great until you said you're a Cowboys fan. Michael, thank you so much for your years of service in making Stanislaus County a safer place to be. And it sounds like you're passing off all of your information, things that you've learned throughout, and we can't thank you enough for that. Thank you.
District Attorney Leggero, thank you for those kind words. Those were very nice, and I really appreciate it. Very humbling experience being up here. 30 years. I never thought, when I started in 1995, you know, 30 years later, I'd be up here. But I do want to thank the board for especially the great support that they've given Mr. Leggero in our office. Very proud and happy to be a Stanislaus County employee. And I want to thank my wife, who's been there with me last 30 years. I've been married for 25. And unfortunately, my girls couldn't be here. Obviously, you know, one of them's in the Navy, so she's protecting our shores, and the other one is finishing an internship at an undisclosed federal agency that I'm not allowed to discuss. But I know that they would love to be here, and we're taping it, but I do want to thank everybody. And my friend, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Next up is Christine Hubert, Community Services Agency Director.
Good morning, Chairman Condit, Supervisors, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Bose. We're here today to honor Maria for 35 years with Stanislaus County. She began her career in 1989 as an extra-help clerk working for Public Works. In February of 1990, she was hired full-time as a bilingual clerical worker assigned to Public Health, working in immunization clinics. A few months later, she transferred across the hall to Communicable Diseases and the Travel Clinic. Maria began her career with Community Service Agency in August 1995. Her first position was working in continuing caseload until February of 2001, when she joined the Special Investigations Unit and spent a year as a fraud tech. From 2002 until 2017, she worked in continuing and intake units, supporting Medi-Cal, CalFresh, and childcare programs. In 2017, she transferred to the Houston Community Office, where she worked until it closed in 2020 and transferred back to her main office. In July of 2021, Maria transferred to Child Welfare, working specifically in the Foster Care Unit to support foster youth, their resource parents, the adoptive families, our young adults that we support, as well as parents in the child welfare system. In addition to her day-to-day work, Maria has contributed with volunteer hours and other work to significant events that have happened at CSA. She was on the Winterfest Employee Social Mixer Planning Committee for over 10 years. She was one of the people doing the initial research to bring the Vita Tax Filing Support Event to CSA, and she continues to volunteer each year. She participated in various initiatives to transition CSA from paper processes to online processes, including our most current database that we use today. She's also a member of the National Eligibility Workers Association. Specifically to Maria, she shared with us, shared with me alongside her career with Stanislaus County. She has so far accomplished a marriage of 35 years and raised three children, all of whom are MGC graduates, and has transferred onto CSU programs to obtain their prospective degrees. 35 years with the agency and her family both had given her motivation to get up each morning and face the day to be the best she can, one day, one task at a time. She could not have come to this point one without the other. She has been able to encourage and support her customers and her children in their goals towards achieving self-sufficiency, putting into practice what she has learned at CSA while servicing Stanislaus County. I got to know Maria sadly over the past year, I guess. We tragically lost two of our coworkers. And just to see her commitment, her support of her coworkers, how much they meant to her, just really impressed me. And just to see that commitment that she had to special people, to us. I'd like to add that Maria's most amazing contribution to this agency and our community is her genuine heartfelt empathy and unyielding kindness. She always goes the extra mile to assist our customers and ensure that everyone who walks through our doors feels seen, heard, and supported. Maria has the ability to de-escalate stressed customers and to maintain her cool, no matter what she might encounter. She's a valued team member, and we are so proud of her commitment to service in Stanislaus County. Congratulations.
Maria, thank you for your leadership, your empathy, and your caring, especially for your fellow employees, for the people and the people of Stanislaus County. Thank you very much. 35 years. That's a long, that's a long time. It does. I'm sure it does. But thank you. On behalf of the entire board, would you like to say a few words?
Just thank you to all my past and current coworkers for all their support, and thank my family for being here with me today. And that's it. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Maria. Next up is Heather, Heather Duval again.
Some longevity here at HSA. Welcome. I am so pleased to be able to stand before you and express my deepest gratitude and congratulations to Ted Oak for his 35 years of service to the Health Services Agency, specifically in the public health programming. Ted started his career in 1987 as a part-time community health worker in public health, a role that would set the stage for an impactful and inspiring career. From his early days, Ted quickly demonstrated his unwavering commitment to the community. After two years of part-time work, he seamlessly transferred to full-time employment, continuing his vital work as a community health worker. In his formative years, Ted provided crucial support to our immunization program, skillfully assisting with patient registration, and meticulously reviewing foreign immunization records, a critical step in ensuring the health of our community. His dedication also extended to the Child Health and Disability Prevention Program, where he expertly registered clients, collected vital signs, and performed essential testing, directly contributing to the well-being of countless children. In 1993, Ted found his true calling when he joined the tuberculosis program. While continuing to lend his invaluable support to the immunization and other programs, it is within the TB program that Ted's impact has been most profound and far-reaching. His primary assignment in the TB program is performing directly observed therapy, a critical standard of care for TB patients in California. Under the supervision of public health nurses, Ted also took on crucial role of case management for individuals diagnosed with latent TB. He consistently assisted with specimen collection for TB patients and always established and maintained an extraordinary rapport with every client. The theme that you'll notice throughout this is always Ted's rapport with the people that he's serving. Ted has been a steadfast and deeply committed member of the public health team, serving the vast majority of his tenure in the TB program, as I mentioned. His work has been nothing short of transformative for countless individuals, particularly through this unwavering dedication to direct therapy. With compassion, patience, and humility, Ted has supported patients from a wide variety of backgrounds and languages. As a fluent commie speaker, Ted has been instrumental in bridging the language and cultural barriers that often exist, ensuring that our TB program serves all individuals with understanding and care. Ted's commitment also goes beyond his official duties. He consistently goes the extra mile. You'll note he's got all kinds of coworkers here today, but also with the people that he serves. He demonstrates profound kindness and empathy through countless selfless acts of service. A few years ago, the TB program had a patient experiencing homelessness. Ted not only ensured the individual received their daily TB medication, but also with incredible passion, brought them donated clothing and a simple meal every day. This profound act of kindness truly reflects who Ted is at its core, a selfless individual dedicated to caring for others. Beyond direct patient care, Ted's always the guy that keeps the county cars going, making sure they're clean and fueled, coworkers have what they need. He regularly volunteers to pick up specimens and do other things for all the folks that he works with. He's always willing to help whenever he's needed, no matter the task, and it speaks volumes about his exceptional character. Throughout the years, Ted has been a constant and calming presence amidst staffing transitions and program changes. He's met patients where they are, literally visiting them at homes, under the bridge, hotel rooms, and shelters. The trust he has meticulously built with the community, particular individuals' most vulnerable moments, is truly extraordinary. For those of us fortunate enough to work alongside him, Ted's been an incredible mentor and role model. He meets new staff, each new staff, with a warm welcome, generously sharing his vast knowledge and offering guidance without hesitation. Our staff have learned so much from him about what it means to truly serve our diverse community with empathy, integrity, and heart. Ted, your 35 years of service to Stanislaus County is an extraordinary achievement. Your unwavering commitment and passion as a community health worker has positively impacted countless lives. Your loyalty, compassion, and quiet leadership have left an indelible mark on the agency and the people we serve. You are more than a colleague, you are a cornerstone of our team, and a cherished member. Thank you so much for your service.
Wow, Ted, 35 years. Yeah, thank you for your service to the people of Stanislaus County, especially our sick and injured patients that you take care of. And it sounds like you are just the ultimate team player, kind of that favorite utility player. And to see all the people you work with here, your coworkers, and support, thank you for your 35 years. We can't say enough from the entire board, we just want to say thank you. What would you like to say?
Well, 35 years, it's a very long time, so I would like to thank you, all my coworkers that are standing here today, and you know, all the support that I get every day. And you know, some day I might be grouchy, some day I might be not. And thank you Beverly, Heather, and Lola, Dala, and Karina, Miriam, the tuner that put up with me every day. So you know, Molly Cruz, she retired, but she's come back to support, and my family back there, Sita, Shandra, and my daughter Tara. So thank you. And harmless, thank you very much.
Okay, next up is public comment. Public comment is a time for those in attendance to speak on items not already on today's agenda. Please state your name for the record, direct all comments towards the dais. And so does fair for every speaker, keep comments to the five-minute time limit. The first card I have up is Brian Boldy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can I ask the clerk to hand this leaflet to the board? Hello, my name's Brian Boldu. I am a behavioral health specialist here at Stanislaus County. I am grateful for my opportunity to be able to serve the community. I have worked for Stanislaus County for over four years. I'm a member of my union SEIU 521. My coworkers and I are here to advocate because too many in our community are suffering from mental health, substance abuse, safety crisis, while employees are overwhelmed by a staffing and caseload crisis. I have a little thing that I wrote that I'd like to share real quick. Stanislaus County is deeply entrenched in a housing conundrum, one that is not merely about shelter, but about systemic inequality, stalled mobility, and policy failure. Both primary and secondary sources are evidence and point to a central conclusion. Homelessness is driven by an individual, not by an individual's shortcomings, but by structural barriers, particularly affordability. Nationwide economic policy failures, systemic inequalities, declining social mobility, and unaffordable housing costs, for generations, are illuminating factors in causation in the homeless crisis. Seeking a fair contract is about effectively helping the community members we serve. If a healthy life and recovery are the goals, staff ought to be able to express, to excite our clients about a recovery life and build our community, we ought to be able to express that joy, gratitude, and contentment, and that is true. A fair contract will enable staff to help our clients and community heal and grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Jamin Mendez, did you, there's two boxes checked, did you want to make a public comment or you were just wanting to speak on 6.2? I just wanted to make sure, thank you. All right, next up Astrid Zuniga.
Good morning Board of Supervisors. Astrid Zuniga, President of United Domestic Workers, ASME Local 3930. And most importantly, I'm a home care provider for my adult son Manny, who lives with autism, intellectual disabilities, and epilepsy. I'm here because we've been in contract negotiations for a while now, and honestly, the wages are not keeping up with the cost of living. Without appropriate raises in wages and benefits, workers will not be attracted to this line of work. And it's going to only deepen the care crisis that we face in this county, and the state, and the nation. We are not incentivizing this at all. We have so many clients out there that need the care, and we don't have enough workers to cover that. You know, let me remind you that there are real people that are affected by what we do at the bargaining table. It's not just numbers on a spreadsheet, right? And it's easy to forget that, but it's real people, real people. The faces that you see in this room, the young boy you hear in the back, what we do at that table, it is impacted by the decisions that we make. And it is my duty, as a president of the union, to make sure that I am fighting to make sure that they have everything they need to live and succeed in the communities in which they live. And that is also a responsibility of you alls, is to do what's right by your community's most vulnerable, and fight, and give them the best possible lives that they can have. And by doing so, that would help in simply giving them a living wage. You know, and given the financial health and performance of the county's reserves and projected revenue, the county's contention that it would fully deplete its general fund if it was in just a few years, if it was to have to cover some of the wages, I think is a bit of an exaggeration. And we know that there is many uncertainties, right, with the federal government and the budget, but this is an opportunity to do the right thing. And to relieve our hard-working IHSS providers and their families, and demonstrate that this county will take care of their workers, even if nobody else will, and take care of their community's most vulnerable. Knowing, and let me add to that, like, even if there are the uncertainties, you have an ally in us. We are always fighting to protect and preserve the program, and finding the funding, whether it be from the federal government grants, state government. We are lobbying up in DC, we are in Sacramento, we are fighting to protect and preserve this program and make sure that you all are getting the funding that you need to help fund this program. We are your allies, not your enemies in this, and we need your help in making sure that our members are getting a living wage. I hope you all do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Astrid. Next up is Cory Croson. Cory Croson?
I'm a little short here, I mean, I should, it's gonna work. Good morning Board members. My name is Cory Croson, and I'm an IHSS caregiver, and also the district chairperson for my union, UDW. I'm here today because as we continue to negotiate our next contract, the county is simply not offering enough to meet the reality of our situation. Here's the thing, IHSS workers are not just family members, picking up some cash on the side. We are healthcare workers, many of us working full-time or more than full. We provide valuable healthcare services to our communities. Some of us care for family members, many of us, including me, care for members of our community. In the county, if the county doesn't offer decent pay that allow us to work for a decent life, people will not be able to afford to do this work. That means that our community's healthcare system will degrade further. And it means that people will get caught up in the cycle of poverty. We can't allow this to happen, so it is my hope that Stanislaus County will work with IHSS caregivers to ensure that we are paid wages that reflect the importance of our work and that allow us to continue doing this work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cory. That was the last public comment card that I had. Anyone else like to make public comment on items not on the agenda? Come on up.
Good morning Board members, and thank you for the opportunity to share the following with you. My name is Carmen Alborn. I take care of my elderly parents, my 87-year-old dad, my 83-year-old mother. I've been a home support services provider for two years now. I care for the people above, and I'm proud of the work that I do. But like many of my fellow caregivers, I am simply not paid enough for the line of work to be sustainable. That is why we are bargaining with you, all for the meaningful wage increase in our next contract. Caregivers, caregiving is one of the most jobs in demand in California, but the low wages are driving people out of this work. Without caregivers, feel the whole healthcare system falls apart. The county needs to invest in us to keep us going and running and doing what we like to do and what we love to do. We are not asking for anything that we don't deserve. The cost of living in Stanislaus County, just in our country, is going up, and this proposal doesn't even keep up. There is not enough to help caregivers like me make ends meet. So I hope that the next time that we meet at the bargaining table, that we will be able to discuss a meaningful wage increase that would allow caregivers like myself to keep doing the important work that we do. May I also add that my parents brought me to this great country over 50 years ago. I share this with you because I truly give emotion when I think of my 87-year-old father, who has given this country everything that he possibly could, because his work ethic is, miha, you work in this country that has allowed us to be here, to have a better future. And I'm very thankful, very honored, and very privileged to know I left him to come here to speak with all of you Board members, with my fellow caregivers. My dad has survived multiple heart attacks. My dad is a cancer survivor. My dad, right now, is barely able to walk. I don't ask for sympathy or empathy, I give that to my parents and the future recipients that I commit to take care of, because of my dad instilling that in me, give back to this country. Over 50 years ago, my dad brought me here, and he just asked, be kind to those around you, give them back what this country has given me. My father spoke that to me. Ladies and gentlemen, I tell you, that's what I do, the work that I do. As hard as it is to see my dad, my mom crippled by arthritis, her hands, 83 years old, not able to open up a bottle of water, I tell you, I am here for that. I've been doing that for many of years, even if not the pay. But I'll be honest with you, like everybody else, the cost of living is making it hard. I work also for, as a bilingual translator for the school district, the pay is not great. I do it again in honor of my dad, because I want to give to the country that has given me so much. That's why I stand here before you this morning, so that you will consider giving us a pay increase. Is extra money going to make it easier for us caregivers to give? A little bit, but we will still continue to do it, because we want to make a difference. So please, consider that, because again, it will make it a little bit easier, but we will continue to do it, and we would appreciate you considering this. As I honor my parents, as I push through, I will do it knowing that you will do what you think and feel is right for the caregivers. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Carmen. Any others like to make public comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, move to the consent calendar. Before the board takes any action on the consent calendar, does anyone in the audience wish to provide public comment on any matter on the consent calendar? Seeing none. I know we are Supervisor Chance Condit has requested B9, B10, B10, C3.
Let me cover C3 real quick, if you don't mind. We're just going to remove item C3 from today's consent calendar. We'll be able to get additional information coming up, we can speak back to that item, we'll bring it back in the future.
And also B8. What's that? You just wanted to comment on B8?
Just a quick comment on B8, thank you so much, Chair. It gives me great pleasure, as you can read in the agenda, that the approval of the labor agreement between the County of Stanislaus and the Stanislaus County Employees Association, ASME Local Number 10. ASME Local Number 10 is our largest bargaining group, they represent half of the county's workforce, so I think that's some positive news for the county to have half of their workforce under contract. And I know we are working with other groups to hopefully also accomplish that in a timely manner. So at least one of the largest groups in our county is now under contract, and I appreciate all the staff that worked to make this company fruition. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Manny. All right, so I'll go ahead and entertain a motion except for B9 and B10. I got a first and a second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, Chance, B9.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes, if you could just go over the staff recommendation for me, please.
Sure, so the staff recommendation on item B9 is to grant annual cost of living increases for all unrepresented bargaining units in Stanislaus County. So those include our confidential assistants, all management employees, all department heads, and all elected official positions. The amounts that are recommended for your consideration are consistent with the same amounts that were granted to the ASME labor agreement that Supervisor Raywall just mentioned that was recently, or I'm sorry, that was just approved on the consent calendar.
Thank you. Well, as I've done in the past, I'm unable to support this item. I just, I think we need to reevaluate how we are financially prioritizing our county government. I believe philosophically, a more of a ground-up approach than a top-down approach. I believe that giving a 7% salary increase to our department heads and to our managerial staff, as well as our elected officials, is simply unfair, and this goes to the core root of my budgetary argument and why I've opposed the budget the last couple times. I just believe that we need to reevaluate how we operate as a county and to consider more of a ground-up approach moving forward, so I will be opposing this item. So I will be opposing this item.
Go ahead. Initiative 11%, 443.
Oh, 11%. Well, I'm against it even more now. Thanks, Vito. I'm 11% more against it.
Okay. Go ahead.
I appreciate Chance's opinion on this. I just want to say, just to make sure everybody knows that this Board of Supervisors makes 20% less than any other Board of Supervisors up and down the valley. And we have in place to make sure that our salary is always 20% lower, 20% lower than everybody else's salary in up and down the eight counties in the valley. The other thing I want to say is something that was said to me, because I used to think the same way Chance does, that a lot of us are blessed here with other jobs, right? We have day jobs that help us, you know, do this job in addition to what we already do. We're able to do this. But I can always remember Christine, one of our clerk of the boards, back in the day, telling me that this shouldn't, this job shouldn't be only for people who have other day jobs and can support, though I think that's a great thing to have, is to have other skills that you bring to this Board of Supervisors and day jobs. But it shouldn't be prohibitive for individuals to do this job if they want to full-time. And the way that that could become prohibitive is if you're not, if it does not pay enough, that people can't do this. And so it shouldn't only be for people like us that are blessed, that have other jobs and can afford to do this in addition to what we already do. It should be, it should be able to be paid enough for individuals to make this their full-time job if they wanted to. And just like anybody wants to have a full-time job and have enough to pay, be able to be paid to be able to support their families. So just another way, Chance, I totally hear what you're saying.
Respectfully, Supervisor, I believe I am a supervisor who is a full-time supervisor who hasn't been blessed with another job. So I do do this part, full-time, not part-time. So ironically enough, I am still opposed to this. And it just isn't about the elected official salary. This is more about the wealth gap between our managerial staff and our line staff employees. And that's why I've opposed the budget the last couple times around, is I just think philosophically, philosophically speaking, we need to reevaluate how we finance the county. And again, I inherently believe in a bottom-up approach.
Okay, no, I appreciate your opinion.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate both my colleagues sharing the opinion. Just like in years past, I'll be working with the Auditor Controller's Office. Any uptick in my salary, I'll work with them to give that through charitable contributions to charities that are doing good work in our community. That's just a personal choice I make. As far as the raises, I don't want to speculate or just assume that this raise is just an extra perk. I think, as already mentioned by many speakers in public comment, costs are rising. When costs are rising, they're just not rising for the people that are making lower than expected wages. They're rising for everybody. So just staying with the costs that we all are experiencing, I'll be voting for this item. To Supervisor Chance Condit's point, I'd be more than willing to have a robust conversation how we can tighten the gap as far as that. But I feel that as a Board of Supervisors, we always look at our nine, nine counties? Eight counties, ninth being us, do an assessment, and always are 20% below the pay scale of any of the county Board of Supervisors, and some of those even being less populated counties than Stanislaus County. So I'm voting for this item, but again, willing to have a robust conversation and then speaking to put it on the record, to make sure I speak with the Auditor Controller's Office to give my uptick in salary to people that are doing good work in our community. Thank you.
Any other comment? All right. I'll entertain a motion, a public comment. Sorry about that. Anybody like to speak on B9? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for motion.
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendations.
Second. I got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. 4-1. All right, B10. Go ahead, Chance.
Mr. Hayes, if you can just elaborate on B10 and what staff primarily it affects. It was just kind of vague when I was reading this over exactly who, this is a policy, a pilot, pilot program policy allowing the CEO to, or designated to appoint new employee at a fifth step of the salary range. Who exactly does that cover? And I guess what employees would that be for?
Okay. Happy to clarify. Thank you for asking the questions. So our current, for background, when we place a new employee into a standard position, which is a classified represented position here in Stanislaus County, that's the vast majority of our positions, they are going to be placed into somewhere into the five salary steps that are available in our salary schedule. Currently, the Board has retained the authority to place a new employee at the fifth step of that salary schedule. So on occasion, you'll see items come before the Board that request your authority to hire someone at that fifth step. We averaged about six of those per year over the last few years, and almost all of them, if not all of them, were lateral public safety law enforcement officers coming from other jurisdictions. This item would allow the CEO's office for a year to have that authority so that we can get job offers confirmed to those candidates quicker in the process and hopefully not use them to other jurisdictions. But we would report back in a year and tell you, how many did we do? Is it consistent? Or was there some big increase in requests for fifth-step appointments? But so far, to answer your question directly, the overwhelming majority of the positions that have been approved for fifth steps in the past and requested were lateral law enforcement officers.
But it isn't specific just for law enforcement. I want to be...
It is not. It could apply to other positions where we have other non-law enforcement personnel that are highly skilled, coming from another agency, that would demand that highest salary level, and it would allow the departments to get a job offer to that person quicker.
And I'm not picking on you or your department all, but this would essentially cover your executive staff?
No. Actually, I already have the authority to do that for management-level positions in the county. It's kind of an anomaly that we have the authority to do it for everyone except for the classified staff.
Okay. I appreciate the clarification, and hopefully we can have an ongoing conversation as this pilot program progresses on that. And I do think that the Board should weigh in on more higher-level personnel applications moving forward, not specifically for law enforcement. Obviously, I wouldn't want to dictate or micromanage how Mr. Leggero does his job or Mr. Dircksey or so on and so forth. But in terms of executive staff and higher personnel for county departments outside of law enforcement, I do think that the Board should have some conversations centered around that. So I look forward to entertaining that as this progresses.
Vito.
So I want to clarify also that this is, the fourth step didn't come to us, the fifth step, which each step is 5%, correct?
Correct.
So it's the last 5%. That's the maximum that someone could get by taking away this power of those six people per year that we've been averaging.
Yeah, that's correct. And I should have added earlier that in order to even make those requests up to the fourth step, department heads have to write justification memos. They have to explain to our office, we're pretty stringent in, you know, the standards, and so they, we outline a standard that we expect to meet for those, and it's not a routine matter. I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah. And I think most of the law enforcement, the ones that have come before us, they have five, six years' experience. If they were in our program, they would have hit all of those steps, it would be in the fifth step. I think that's pretty typical. And then there's the cost of not having to train. So there's an argument in some of those positions, but I think what Supervisor Condit's saying is correct, in that we have to be careful on the top end.
All right. Any other comments? Any public comment on B10?
Motion to approve B10.
Second. I got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. We're going to go to our public hearing. Public hearing to consider the approval of the fiscal year 2025-26 assessments for various county services areas and landscape assessment districts and landscape and lighting districts.
Good morning, Chairman Condit, members of the Board, CEO Hayes, Council Bowes, Andrew Melissia, and Deputy Director of our Department of Public Works. With me, I have Farah Alshaidi. She is one of our accountants and works on these special districts with us. The agenda item today is to request and conduct a public hearing to consider approval of the fiscal year 25-26 assessments for the following special districts. County Service Area numbers 4 through 27, Del Rio Heights Landscape Assessment District, and the following landscape and lighting districts, Bret Hart, Beistrom, Howard McCracken, Laurel, Paradise South, Riverdale, and Riverview. CSA 16 through 27 have an approved methodology in place to annually adjust the assessment rate based on the projected cost of services. The methodology was not implemented when CSA's 4 through 12 were established. Therefore, the assessment for these districts may not be increased without a proposition 218 vote of the respective property owners. Over the last year, operations and maintenance costs have largely increased due to increase in labor, cost of living materials, and equipment costs. CSA number four, which is in Salida, that's the storm drain portion of Salida, was previously split out with CSA 10, which remains as the parks services and landscaping services. When that split out, there was a cost agreement to move funds over a four-year period, and so as part of this year's assessment, or budget, I'm sorry, $62,500 will be transferred over from CSA 4 to CSA 10, and the final payment was anticipated to be next year's budget year. As far as this fiscal year, we are not increasing any assessments. The decision is based on ongoing analysis across all of the districts, and basically just going back through and making sure that we're being as efficient as possible and not increasing assessments for the property owners. With that, we have staff recommendations that the Board find that the notice of public hearing was published in compliance with Section 6066 of the Government Code, conduct a public hearing to receive comments regarding the budget year 25-26 annual assessments, set the budget year 25-26 annual assessments as shown on the assessment schedule 25-26 for various county service areas, landscape assessment district, and landscape and lighting districts, make the engineers report a part of the record of this proceeding, and authorize the auditor controller to add the annual assessments to the budget year 25-26 task With that, staff asks that anyone wishing to make a comment during the public hearing, please identify the name and number of special districts they are commenting on.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Any questions from the Board? Seeing none, I'm going to open up the public hearing. I haven't seen any written reports on this particular item. Anyone have any comment on this agenda item? Seeing none? Going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board for motion or comment.
Motion to approve?
Unless somebody had a question. Second. I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Public hearing to consider an appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of use permit PLN 2021-0012 West Main Compost, a request to operate a composting facility on the 23.5 acres of a 47.82 acre parcel in the general agriculture A2-40 Zone District located at 1236 West Main Street between South Carpenter Road and Crow's Landing Road in the Turlock area, and adoption of a mitigated negative declaration. Planning and Community Development, Angela.
Yes. Good morning. The Board has received a letter dated August 4th from Petrelakis Law and Advocacy asking for this item to be continued. They have requested a continuance either until September 30th or October 21st. Those would be night meetings, which we have heard from the neighbors, that they would like the meeting to be in the evening. Staff would request that if the Board wishes to consider the continuation, that we go to October 21st due to some staffing constraints that we have with the September meeting.
So I'm okay with continuing it to the October, what was it, 21st?
21st.
21st.
October 21st.
Okay. So that'll be in the form of a motion that we continue it to October 21st.
I'll second that motion.
All right. I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
I know we had a lot of cards for public comment.
Yeah. You can work on it if you want to. There's no, we're not taking any action.
Right. Okay. Marcy? Do you like to make public comment?
I'll pass.
Okay. George?
I'm good.
Okay. Al?
Pass.
Pass. Jamin?
Pass.
Pass. All right. That takes care of everybody. Any others like to make comment on this particular agenda item? All right. Seeing none, we'll be moving on to discussion item, acceptance of the 2024 Biannual Performance Outcomes Report, Chief Executive. Patrice? Damian?
Yes. Hi. Hi. Good morning. Okay. As Damian brings up the slide, there it is. Good morning, Chairman Condit, Board members, CEO Hayes, and County Council Bowes. I am Patrice Dietrich, Assistant Executive Officer, and with me this morning is Damian Martinez, Senior Management Consultant and the Project Manager for the county's Performance Visioning Program. We have the honor this morning to present the 2024 Biennial Performance Outcomes Report. This is our look back to fiscal years 2023 and 2024, and the actual results that our departments are reporting on their performance metrics. Before we begin, I do want to recognize the other members of our Performance Visioning Team, Jewel War, Deputy Executive Officer, and Sina Tat, our Executive Assistant. They both spent countless hours assisting departments, gathering the data, looking at the metrics, and trying to make sure that we put this into a report that is visually easy to understand and can be interpreted by the public. We also want to thank the department leadership staff who shepherd performance visioning within their own department programs and operations. Start with a few slides on the background to our Performance Visioning Program, and as with all of our business, it begins with the county's mission. On screen, we build community. This is literally the foundation upon which we operate to deliver quality services and programs to the community. Our vision of becoming a community of choice, where people live, work, and thrive, a place worthy of calling home, was finalized in September 2021, and together, these statements clarify the county's purpose and goals for the future, why we exist, and what we do. With the purpose and the direction set with the vision and the mission, the Board priorities displayed on the screen provide the strategic focus areas for our collective work. Each of our 27 departments are assigned within one of these six priority areas, and it's through our department programs, operations, and services that those priorities become real. It's our belief that our vision can be achieved with diligent focus to making a difference in each of these areas. And to that end, the priorities are central to our Performance Visioning Program, which begins with a plan and then concludes with each cycle with a report on the actual experience. These are our priorities are also core to the development and balancing of our budget and our long-range modeling. The final element to our approach to achieving the county's vision of success lies with our values. Displayed on screen, they were developed through input of leaders throughout the organization, tested in focus groups and interactive sessions with the Board of Supervisors. They were approved in April of 2023. Our daily work should be exhibiting these county values. We believe each person matters. We work every day to earn people's trust. We are good partners. We encourage innovation, and we deliver results. That last orange box is the direct tie-in to the Performance Visioning Program. On the last slide I'm going to talk about is this busy slide here, which is a depiction of the county's strategic plan as a system. Performance Visioning, our program, is embedded within our organization, and we don't actually have a strategic plan that is a document that sits on a shelf in a binder. Instead, we have a strategic system. So... So it pulls from at the core the vision, mission, and values of our organization and then guides the organization through policy setting and intentional tracking of performance. We establish through leadership direction our objectives, allocate our resources, maintain our fiscal responsibility, and do the hard work to plan, measure, assess, and repeat on our performance. It's an iterative cycle that's moving sideways on the display, to the right with our annual objectives and setting of a two-year plan, and then to the left, each year, taking a look at our annual fiscal outcomes and accomplishments in one-year increments, and then every two years doing a full outcomes report. This entire system is linked to and supported by the Capital Improvement Plan, an IT Strategic Plan, as well as considered within our annual budget and in our long-range modeling. For us, this work is not done in silos, but it is interconnected in order to make a difference. You had a lot of business on your agenda this morning, and we debated about whether or not to even bring this topic in a presentation mode, and then we decided that taking the time to recognize all of our department efforts to providing best service to the community, highlighting the progress, and also transparently identifying our areas of growth is really critically important. For us, this is a continuous improvement process, and so in pausing to reflect and share with you, the board, and the public we serve, we're making space for input and to actually work on continuous improvement. And so now Damian's going to take you through highlights of the report.
Thank you, Patrice. Good morning. The slide before you outlines the framework that is used for performance visioning. Beginning at the base of the pyramid, the simplest indicator to measure is how much did we do? While a quantitative measure, it does not determine the value of the work performed or services provided. As departments focus on annual strategies and objectives to continuously improve performance, they also examine more meaningful ways in which to measure success. Moving upward, a more challenging metric focuses on how well did we do it and provides the qualitative value missing at the lower levels. However, the true measure of success is identified at the peak. While much harder to measure, this level reaches the core of what departments and the organization as a whole worked toward, the true outcomes of county programs and services, those that improve the whole community by asking, is anyone better off? Optimally, department performance measures will progress up the pyramid to demonstrate that county programs and services have, in effect, measured results showing people are better off in Stanislaus County. Using the RBA framework, results-based accountability, this pyramid design serves to guide the organization through the different levels of performance measurement that indicate how well the organization is doing in achieving overall success. This report is organized by board priority area and includes write-ups on each of the county departments. Following each board priority section and the community-wide indicators are departmental write-ups, which focus on the department's mission statement, objectives, accomplishments, and their performance measures, and progress on those measures. And you'll see at the bottom of the slide, the number and the metrics. In total, county departments identified 64 performance measures in the following categories. 16 fall under that pyramid, if you recall, at the base of the pyramid, to 25% of how much did we do, the middle of that pyramid, the how well did we do it, or 46, 70%, fell into that category. And at the higher level of the pyramid, how well did we do it, there were two performance measures and 3% fell into that category. In terms of community-wide indicators, each board priority section of the report begins with an analysis of the county's community-wide indicators, of which there are 15. These are measures, they're different from performance measures, that refer to the overall health and general well-being of Stanislaus County residents at large. Community-wide indicators are measures that refer to population groups rather than individuals. They indicate what is occurring at the community level rather than the individual level. The goal of community-wide indicators is to work toward achieving long-term trends in the positive direction in all areas. No one county department is responsible for community-wide indicators in their respective board priority area. Rather, the progress on departments' performance measures should aspire to and be contributing factors toward improving the county's community-wide indicators, which in turn contribute to and influence the overall health of the community. The progress on departmental measures should aspire to and be contributing factors toward improving the county's community-wide indicators. So now I'd like to share with you just a few examples of what we are tracking here in Stanislaus County for our community-wide indicators. Under the board priority area of supporting a strong and safe community, what you'll see before you is one of the community-wide indicators we are tracking is the crime rate. You will notice that the violent crime rate in the county indicated by the blue bars has, on average, steadily decreased, and in 2023, we saw a sharp decline in the property crime rate indicated by the gray bars. Compared to our benchmark counties indicated by the blue and the orange line, our county has generally reported lower crime rates. Under the board priority area of supporting a healthy community, one of the community-wide indicators we are tracking is the chronic disease rate. You will notice that the chronic disease rate, which is defined by the rate of diabetes and heart disease in our county, has fluctuated. On average, Stanislaus County, indicated by the blue bars, has reported a higher chronic disease rate than our eight benchmark county average indicated by the gray bars. The county's Health Services Agency continues to work on addressing these issues and rates. You can see this is a zoomed-in view. Under the board priority area of developing a high-performing economy, one of the community-wide indicators we are tracking here is the unemployment rate. You will notice that the unemployment rate steadily declined in Stanislaus County since 2021, and you'll notice their data were not collected in 2020 because of the COVID-19 pandemic, the Stanislaus County's indicated by the blue bars. Again, the goal of community-wide indicators is to work toward achieving long-term trends in the positive direction in all areas. I just want to reiterate, no one county department is responsible for community-wide indicators. These were just a sample. Rather, the progress on departments' measures should aspire to and be contributing factors toward improving the community-wide indicators, which help to contribute to and influence the overall health of our community. So what I'd like to discuss now are a few examples of department performance measures. So the slides, the next three slides before you are going to reflect, again, their samples, examples related to those three questions in the RBA pyramid. In the how much did we do category, for example, that of the four performance measures that the library had identified and is tracking, they identified one performance measure in the category of how much did we do. Here, the library is measuring, for the first time, the percent of active cardholders who have used their cards within the last 12 months, reflecting the library's effectiveness in maintaining user engagement and ensuring that cardholders are consistently utilizing library resources. Circulation increased overall for the library in 2024, so it appears lost borrowers have been replaced by new users. At the same time, it is clear there are opportunities to improve user retention. This is baseline data that the library will continue to track and evaluate on an annual In the category of how well did we do it, the Health Services Agency identified two performance measures. One of their measures is highlighted here, which is the number and percent of healthy weight babies at birth. Over the five-year period presented on the slide, the percent of healthy weight births remain consistently high, ranging from 83% to 84%. Despite slight fluctuations in the total number of births each year, the proportion of babies born at a healthy weight has held steady. In the final category of is anyone better off, the third question in the RBA pyramid, the probation department is measuring the number and percent of adults and juveniles placed on felony probation supervision who are convicted of a new felony or misdemeanor offense within three years of supervision, which is the recidivism rate. The chart here focuses on adults, and preliminary statistics show early decreases. However, to fully and truly measure recidivism rates, additional time is needed for some of the years reflected on the graph. The county's performance visioning model, as Patrice had mentioned, operates in a two-year cycle. In year one, departments contribute to a performance visioning plan where departments identify performance measures to the board, and we bring this plan to the board as a consent item. In year two, departments contribute to a biannual performance outcomes report, which is the report you have before you for 2024, where they report out on those same measures once the two-year period closes, and if there's relevant years prior, they include that as well, and we bring this report, as we're doing now, to the board as a presentation. This report, essentially the look back, closes out the two-year reporting period, and the next cycle already has begun with the Board of Supervisors approving the 2026 Performance Visioning Plan, the look forward, on November 5th, 2024. As we move forward with and continue to refine performance visioning, we continue to also support the county's Results-Based Accountability Certification Program cohort, which is a training certification program. And we are currently partnering with the county's Learning Institute to develop an internal RBA training program for county employees. County departments will also continue to share their performance and outcomes in various additional reports to the board and in forthcoming board workshops. The staff recommendation is to accept the 2024 Biennial Performance Outcomes Report. This concludes the presentation, and we are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Damian. Patrice.
Yeah, I would like to just say a few closing comments as well. First is to thank Patrice and Damian for your presentation this morning and all of the work that goes into putting this document together. This is not an easy task, and it takes quite a bit of time and leadership to get this done, so I want to thank you both, and particularly Damian, for your work on this. I also want to recognize that when you try to bring a single document to the board and to the public to discuss performance as an organization, it's impossible to measure everything that we do and to report out on all of the work that all of our county departments do. However, we are very much committed to this results-based accountability framework and the idea that there needs to be a standard procedure for us to measure and report out performance outcomes to the board and to the public on this cycle as we've presented. So we're doing our best effort to do that. It's very important to us. I think sometimes it's difficult for this work to get the attention that it may deserve because we're very busy providing services in the community and handling the priorities that are in front of us, but it is critical that we take the time to slow down and make sure we're measuring and we're being thoughtful about the types of measurements that we want to bring forward and present to the public as well. I also want to recognize that the board has been very supportive of including this process in our recent board workshops, and it's been, I think, some very good conversations, at least from a county staff perspective. We have those members of the public who may not attend board workshops. We have very lengthy conversations on individual department metrics where departments can come in and spend an hour talking about their performance metrics and the issues that they're facing in their department and make sure that they receive feedback and questions from the board or the public who may participate as well. So that's been very good for us, and if you are, if there are any particular departments that you're interested in spending time with in the future, hopefully they'll be a part of one of those board workshop environments. And with that, as Damian said, we're happy to take any questions from the board or the public. We welcome all of your questions and input.
Thank you, Jody. Any questions from the board? All right, open up public comment. Anyone have a public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for comments and a motion.
So how far we've come, starting out many years ago, trying to find what metrics would be something that we thought would work, didn't always meet the department heads, we weren't always on the same page. I think I teamed up with Kristin Olson, and she was really good at this, as you can imagine. And the metrics, now we've got years, consecutive years, we get to see trend lines, and there's real measurement coming about. I think this is, just the pyramid itself is really important to the people of Stanislaus County, showing that we're trying to be as efficient and effective as possible in delivering services and that we're doing it better each year. So very proud of the team. I know it takes a lot of time for department heads to measure the metrics. I know it takes a lot of time in the CEO's office, but well worth the effort. So thank you all for participating.
Any other comments?
I just want to thank you guys for the effort, like Vito said, to put this thing together. You know, any business, that's what we do. We need to look and see how the business is doing. You can have a feeling, you can, you know, think, you know what's going on, but from an accountant's standpoint, you got to see the numbers, you got to see what really is being accomplished, and I think that's what this report attempts to do and does very well. And I know it's hard, putting this stuff together. A lot of it's kind of abstract stuff, but I appreciate the effort you guys have done, and it really just helps us evaluate how we're doing and how we can do better. So thank you guys very much.
Damian, Patrice, thank you for the report. The big question, you know, like riding a bicycle uphill, you can be busy just riding as hard as you want, but at the top, is anybody better off? You can look busy, but if you don't have that information to say somebody is better off for what we're doing, it doesn't make any sense. So it's great to have that information. I'm sure it took a long time to put that information together and present it to us, and we appreciate it, and we look forward to talking about that further. Thank you. All right. Entertained a motion.
Motion to approve, accept this report?
Second.
I got a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Thank you very much also for taking the time. As Jody mentioned, in your board workshops, your input has just been invaluable to helping us dial in where to go to help our community, so really appreciate you.
Thank you, Patrice. All right, next agenda item, approve to retroactively accept $39,475,000 in state grant funding for felony mental health, diversion, and community-based restoration infrastructure programs, authorized payment of state penalties totaling $3,975,000 for exceeding the felony incompetent to stand trial, cap, and fiscal year 2023, '24 and related actions Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. Ruben.
We promise to make that one longer next time.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
My name is Ruben Imperial. I'm the county's Behavioral Health Director. I'm accompanied at the dais today with Karen Service, he's our fund development manager and provides management support in writing many of our grants. I'm also in the audience today is our district attorney, Jeff Leggero, and our chief public defender, Jennifer Jensen, along with several other staff that are available and to answer questions related to this board agenda item. All right. Just as long as in confusing the title, the presentation is quite complex, so I just wanted to, from the beginning outright, say that there's two major parts to this report. report. The first one is a report on the felony incompetent to stand trial growth cap impacts and cost. And then there is a grant from the Department of State Hospitals related to that as well. So just some background on the felony incompetent to stand trial overview. So felony IST process focuses on the defendant's mental capacity to understand the charges and to assist in their defense. Primarily, it's initiated through their defense counsel or the DA or others involved in the court process around the defendant's competency. It triggers a court-ordered mental health evaluation to determine if the defendant meets the legal standard for competency. Criminal proceedings are typically suspended if the defendant is found incompetent, and those individuals, once they are found incompetent, are sent to the Department of State Hospitals. So in California, IST patients are treated at the California Department of State Hospital until their competency is restored or also a time limit is reached. The Department of State Hospital manages, is managed by the state of California. There are several hospitals throughout the state of California. Patients are admitted to DSH, are mandated for treatment by a criminal or civil court judge. More than ninety percent of the individuals sent to the state hospital are sent there as part of the forensics commitment. So over the last several years, California has seen an increase in the number of individuals being sent to the state hospital under this program or under this designation for IST. And in the recent, in recent years, referrals have actually exceeded the expansion of available treatment capacity statewide. So to address that issue, the Senate passed SB 184, and this is the law that was passed, which sets a statutory limit on the number of IST determinations a county can make in a fiscal year. So to address this issue of too many individuals being sent to the state hospital and exceeding the capacity at the state hospital, the Senate or the state passed this law that basically set a cap on the number of individuals we can send. And counties exceeding that baseline face what's called escalating penalty payments and structured to encourage diversion and community-based alternatives instead of hospital commitments to the state hospital. So they set a cap, and they said if you go over that cap, we're going to sanction, set some fines and sanctions. And all of that is meant to compel counties and work with counties to offer local-based community services. I'll go into more details about this, but these funds that are sent to the state under this law are deposited into what's called the Mental Health Diversion Fund, which supports county diversion efforts. So you'll see in the slide here, these are the, actually the top ten counties that exceeded their cap, and you'll see that IST placements in our county rank among the highest in the state. This chart shows that Stanislaus County ranks fourth among the top ten counties with the highest percentage of IST placement rates increases over baseline for fiscal year 2024. And the baseline was actually established per Welfare Institutions Code, Section 4336, using total felony IST determinations made in fiscal year 2022. So although that chart does reflect us in the top ten, there is a bit of good news in terms of where we are today for actually this last fiscal year. So you will see, I'm sorry, the years got cut off there on the bottom, but for fiscal years, that's not cut off on mine too, but for fiscal year 23, 24, you will see that we peaked there. We are now on a downward trend for this last fiscal year. Well, actually, this one, the current penalty payment we're paying right now is fiscal year 23, 24. Yeah. So twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, so for twenty-two, twenty-three, confusing myself here. Let me just, let me take a look at my notes real quick. Well, I will cover that just in a moment. What this chart is meant to reflect is we are on a downward trend in this last fiscal year. So the one hundred and forty was this last fiscal year that just completed, which is twenty-four, twenty-five. So compared to twenty-three, twenty-four, which was the one sixty-one, we are on a downward trend. And I want you to note that these numbers are the actual overall raw numbers from the state hospital. You will see different data that we have throughout the document and some even public reports that show a lower number. The difference is these are the numbers before we get any credits, or they discount us any number of referrals. I just, this chart is just meant to reflect how we've trended over the last ten years and have seen some escalations in the last two to three years, and it does seem we are now on a bit of a downward trend. So with SB 184, it does set limits, it does send a penalty payment, but it also offers a pathway for those penalty payments to be returned to the county upon a submission of an approval of what's called an expenditure plan to the Department of State Hospital. And what that means is we pay the penalty payment, but if we come up with a plan, we can receive these monies back to invest in local programs to address the IST issue. The plan must detail the allocation of funds to programs and services specifically designed to reduce future IST placements. The legislation and overall, all the work around SB 184 emphasizes the use of these return funds for initiatives such as prebooking diversion for individuals exhibiting psychotic symptoms to prevent felony arrest and postbooking diversion programs targeting individuals likely to be found incompetent to stand trial by offering alternatives to incarceration to state hospital. So to address this issue locally, when we started to see this program was going to be implemented in fiscal year 24, the CEO's office convened, at that time I was the assistant executive officer, so I started to work with our Behavioral Health Director, our district attorney, the public defender, and our sheriff's department detention, and we put together a plan and a set of services in place to begin to address this IST issue. And in the programs that we put together, I'll go into a little bit more in detail in a moment, but in general, it's what's called our Collaborative Court Program, which includes what we call a reintegration support team. This team works in the jail, partnering with the public defender to accept referrals and help individuals get access to treatment. The second program there is the Collaborative Court Behavioral Health Services Team, which is primarily the treatment team. So as the reintegration support teams work to get individuals into treatment, they're referring to our Collaborative Court Behavioral Health Services Team who initiates treatment. They could carry them and serve them, or they can transfer them to another program, but those two programs, that's their focus. And then there are some staff in the Public Defender's Path Team that also work alongside BHR staff in the jail, working alongside to get folks access to treatment and helping them once they return from the jail-based program. So in fiscal year 22, 23, Stanislaus County exceeded our felony IST baseline commitments by twelve and was assessed, that was our first penalty payment, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The Board of Supervisors approved paying that invoice on August 27th, 2024, and funded with the use of correct Community Corrections Partnership Funds. We, the IST executive group that I just mentioned was convened, wrote, and developed our first expenditure plan that was sent to the state in April of 2025. That plan was approved and identifies the department's Collaborative Court Program, which includes the reintegration support team and the Collaborative Court Behavioral Health Services Team as approved expenditures for these IST penalty payments that are returned to the county. These initiatives primarily were already funded with CCP money, provided early screening assessments and linkages to Behavioral Health Services for individuals in jail or involved in diversion efforts, and it is a chief strategy to address the IST issue in the county. And the bottom line with our programs and the main intervention we're focusing on is increasing access to treatment. When they're coming in, in their first encounters in the jail, and we identify a mental illness or this mental illness that's associated with their crime, that's the point. Get them into treatment, provide the care, and the hope is that we prevent IST determinations. The grant I'm going to talk about in a minute is a program that's going to talk about, or is going to provide services to divert them once they've been determined to be IST. A lot of what we're doing here is trying to work on preventing these issues. The Collaborative Court Programs were originally approved by the Board of Supervisors in July of 2023, and were originally referred as the Court Assessment and Triage Team and the Mental Health Court Diversion Behavioral Health Services Team. These teams, we've since changed their names. These teams represented the department's early efforts to address the IST issue. The approved expenditure plan enabled the return of the four hundred and fifty thousand at original payment, which BHRs received on May 8th of 2025 and was reinvested in the Collaborative Court Program as originally intended. So in anticipation of these penalty payments, the county incorporated a recommendation into the approved expenditure plan to include the Community Correction Partnership Funds to satisfy the obligation consisting with its approach for fiscal year 450. So just as we've done with the four hundred and fifty penalty payment for fiscal year 2023, we've set the penalty payment fees up, they sent the money back, we're investing them in this program, we're going to do the same thing for the penalty payment for fiscal year 23, 24. So in fiscal year 23, 24, the county exceeded its baseline by eighty-nine, of eighty-nine by fifty-nine commitments, which has triggered an additional three point nine penalty payment. I wanted to go back to this slide really quickly. As of fiscal year 24, 25, third quarter data, the latest available, the latest data available at this time is the county projects an estimated penalty payment of two point six million next year for, and again, this is covering the amount of IST determinations we've sent in fiscal year 24, 25.
Ruben, can I ask you really quick, just a quick question, just to make sure I understand? So are we saying the four fifty plus the million nine eighty-seven from 23, 24, were funds that were being dedicated already towards this, or is this money that we had to pull away from other programs to go towards trying to solve this problem?
These, so the four fifty was part of the CCP allocation that had already been obligated for the, for this program.
Okay. And the million nine eighty-seven five for the next year, same thing, money that we'd already, so we weren't really having to pull it off of other programming to do this and stuff we had already planned to spend anyway?
Correct.
Perfect. Okay, keep going, sorry.
So let me, went over this slide a little fast. So just to give you a timeline of things and penalty payments, fiscal year 22, 23 was four hundred and fifty thousand. The one we are currently addressing right now for fiscal year 23, 24 is three point nine. We are anticipating the penalty payment for 24, 25 to be two point six. So we still got another penalty payment to address in the next fiscal year. So I'm going to talk about the fiscal year 23, 24 plan. So, so the county, in our plan for the four hundred and fifty and what we submitted for fiscal year 22, 23, we included in that plan that we were going to return and we were going to continue to fund these programs using the Community Correction Partnership Funds and the BHRS fund balance. So to pay for this current penalty payment, we're recommending the use of one point nine of Community Corrections Partnership Funds and one point nine of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services fund balance to pay this penalty payment. The one point nine in CCP funds will be reallocated to support the Collaborative Court Program, consistent with the county's IST reduction strategy and what we said in our expenditure plan. BHRS is currently developing recommendations for how we will expend our portion. However, in our expenditure plan, we did say that for fiscal, the total cost of staffing for the Collaborative Court Program in that plan is four point three. And so what we are working on is returning to the board to fully staff that Collaborative Court Program, which we imagine the one point nine will go to the Collaborative Court and the RST to fully staff that program. The one point nine that we initially invested in CCP funds was to get the program going and get it started. We still have to add additional staff to fully, to fully staff the program to meet the needs of the program. So on June 3rd, 2025, the Board of Supervisors approved the budget year 2026 CCP plan, which allocates two point six to partially fund the staffing and operating expenses of the Collaborative Court for both BHRS and the Public Defender's Office for, during this fiscal year. BHRS will be returning to the board with recommendations to fully staff and identify funding for the Collaborative Court Program model as highlighted in the plan. So that is talking about what we put in place around prevention, early intervention and preventing further IST determinations. In parallel to those efforts, our IST Executive Workgroup and also sought out a grant specifically designed to support counties in addressing the IST issue. So we pursued additional state resources to build sustainable infrastructure and to expand diversion programs aimed at reducing IST determinations. Recognizing the urgent need to build up these types of treatment capacities, the county applied for funding opportunities offered by the Department of State Hospital to support long-term system transformation efforts. These efforts resulted in the award of two major grants designed to strengthen the county's ability to divert individuals with serious mental illness from the criminal justice system and provide appropriate community-based programming. So the Department of State Hospital diversion program funding awarded to the county is divided into two contract agreements. The first agreement is with what's called Advocates for Human Potential. They serve as the administrator of this program for the Department of State Hospital and provides us one-time infrastructure funds specifically designed to develop residential housing settings and programs to support individuals participating in Department of State Hospital-funded diversion programs. The goal is to increase the local bed capacity in our region, so these individuals have a place to get the residential-type treatment they need, but here in our community. The second agreement is for what's called, so these are one-time infrastructure funds that we can invest to build rehab, you know, rehabilitate facilities. There's several requirements for those funds, but those are one-time, basically construction or rehabilitation of building funds. The twenty-eight million dollars is actually for a program which is intended to support intensive community treatment models with increased frequency of clinical contacts and access to psychiatric services, as well as all wraparound services and housing costs for an average eighteen-month length of stay. And the pre-child felony mental health diversion program is a requirement, though, to access those infrastructure funds. We are not yet absolutely sure if we're going to need those infrastructure funds, but they are available to us. So the infrastructure funds, we have up to eleven million dollars if we need it. We can exceed, though, ninety-three thousand dollars per bed, up to a hundred and twenty bed is our cap. It's, the grant terms are from July 1st to June of 2028. As I said, it's specifically to support acquisition, construction, modification, expansion. As I said, it's specifically to support acquisition, construction, modification, expansion, retrofit, so on and so forth when it comes to facilities. The actual program, we have the ability to bill up to $28 million. This is a cost reimbursement program, they're not just going to give us the $5, $6 million per year. Basically, we can bill up to $28 million for each of these individuals that we see in the program. And again, the grant terms are for five years, and so that's an average of about, you know, $5 to $6 million a year we have access to. The goal for us would be 30 clients annually, and if you do the math, you know, if we bring down the one, from 140 where we are today, bringing down to, you know, another 30 individuals, we would be well into reducing our penalty payment cap. Again, the program does apply an annual length of 18 months. These folks do have to be clinically appropriate and evidence-based behavioral health residential and outpatient treatment must be provided. So, diversion participants in this program will have serious mental health issues or serious mental illness disorders. They would have been charged with certain felony crimes and found by the court to be competent, a court of competent jurisdiction and qualified for diversion services pursuant to all of the applicable laws. Upon successful completion of the treatment program, charges against the individuals may be dismissed. So, this is a partnership with the court, the district attorney and the public defender. A guilty plea would have, I'll get into these details if we need to get into them. However, the main point here is that this is a partnership between the courts, the DA and the public defender, and the courts are the ones who determine who qualifies for the program. So, what that means is for the next six months, we will be planning, if you approve this, the acceptance of this grant, we will spend the next six months planning this program. BHRS will be the lead agency in planning and applying for the program. The plan will be in compliance with the IST mental health diversion policy and procedures. It is a very prescribed program. It's based on evidence-based and research that the state, with key stakeholders across the state have determined will work to address the IST issue. The plan will include the courts and all, again, all our justice partners in agreeing to a program. It will, we will also be able to pay for personnel costs, operation costs, equipment costs and other costs associated with the program. We will return to the Board of Supervisors for all applicable approvals and agreements regarding these plans that we put together with the courts, and we will only submit that plan to the state once we've come back to the Board of Supervisors for approval. I do want to say something about this when it comes to our, at least, executive work group and view on these funds. These funds are available to us primarily because of the high numbers that we have and that made us eligible, but I also want to reiterate two things. One is, even when we were planning and not aware of this opportunity, for us, these types of programs were deemed crucial to success in lowering IST determination. So, this isn't us just taking these funds because we can. As we talked about this, residential placement, intensive wraparound services, varying low caseload-type programming was identified as crucial to being successful and reducing ISTs. The second thing about this is if we do implement this program, the courts or the, I'm sorry, the state does give us some credits. So, we have several programs in our county, and because we have those programs, there are certain credits that they give us that lowers our penalty payment. If we implement this program, that penalty payment will also gain some additional credits. That's going to lower our penalty payment once again. So, I'm closing up here, but I did want to just revisit the fiscal impact because it's a very complicated thing that's happening here, and just want to make sure we're clear about what we're asserting. So, our total penalty payment for this last fiscal, for fiscal year 2324 is 3.9 million. We're going to be paying, we're going to split that cost between the CCP and BHRS's funds. Upon straight approval, the 1.9 in CCP reimbursement will be reinvested in the collaborative court program. BHRS will be proposing using the remaining 1.9 million to fully staff the program, applying the full point, applying the full $3.9 million. BHRS had budgeted $2.3 million in their proposed budget for the penalty payment based on estimates, so we are an adjustment to the increased appropriations and revenue by 1.6 and the behavioral health and recovery service budget unit is needed, as detailed in the Budget Journal, and is recommended to support the penalty payment. And as far as the grant, we are accepting two grants, and one is for $11.2 million for infrastructure projects and $28 million over five years for actual, the program and the services. And we will develop a plan in partnership with our justice partners and return to the board before we submit our plan to the state, there is no impact on the County General So, I'm going to read our staff recommendations. All right. I gotta read these all, don't I? For the record?
I could summarize.
I could summarize. Yeah. I'll try to summarize. So, Resolution 1 is to approve the resolution to authorize the county to, BHRS to enter into the agreements with the Department of State Hospital and Advocates for Human Potential for the IST diversion in the community-based infrastructure program grants. Authorize the Behavioral Health Director or Designee to accept the grants in the amounts of $28 million for the diversion program, retroactive from July 1st through June 30th, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2030. And authorize the Behavioral Health Director or Designee to sign and execute all related agreements, contracts and amendments, and other documents required to accept the state grants. Authorize the Director to accept the California Department of State Hospital IST diversion and community-based restoration infrastructure program grant in the amount of $11, $2 million for a retroactive term of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028. Authorize the Behavioral Health Director to execute all related agreements and contracts and other documents to accept the California Department of State Hospital IST diversion and community-based restoration infrastructure programs grant. An approved payment of $3.9 million, approved payment of $3.9 million, $975,000 penalty invoice from the Department of State Hospital for fiscal year 2324 for exceeding the county's felony IST growth cap, and then direct the auditor controller to increase appropriations by 1.6, by $1,632, $238 in the BHRS budget, as detailed in the attached Budget Journal. And with that, I am open for questions.
Any questions for Ruben?
Okay, I'll go.
Go ahead.
First, Ruben, Karen, thank you guys very much for the presentation. So, this, you know, this, when this first happened, this, we first heard about this, and Ruben talked about this and he did a good presentation at the Mental Health Board recently about this stuff. But when this first happened, this reminded me of kind of AB 109, which was back in 2011 or so, when we thought the sky was falling and they were going to send all these individuals back from state prison to the county of origin where the crime where this happened and put them back in our jails. And we thought that was the end of the world at that point, and I think in the end, we saw that actually we could do a better job of helping these individuals, prevent them from recidivating and just at the local level rather than what was going on at the state level, or we'd go to state prison and learn how to be better, better bad guys, is what I always say, better bad people. And so, I kind of look at this the same way. It's kind of the state forcing our hand to do something here that, first of all, not our fault that we, at least as far as this increase in ISTs across the state, I think, what else would you think would happen? We legalize marijuana, the potency of marijuana is unbelievable now, the schizophrenia that comes with the psychosis, and I get this all from my clients who are psychiatrists who have to deal with these individuals. You know, we decriminalize hard drugs, everything's a misdemeanor now, and we wonder why our mental health issues have increased across the state. So, first of all, I kind of, to some extent, we helped create these problems in the state, but then they come in and say, okay, now we got to fix what we just created. Again, that's just my commentary on this, but just my opinion there, but that's how I can think that we got in this spot. The part that's kind of disturbing a little bit, and it's too bad Jennifer left, as our Public Defender left, but, you know, we look at these numbers here and, you know, that we made the top 10 list, and we're up there pretty high in the list as far as ISTs just in our county. I know we've got all kinds of things that we're working on now to stop that, to try to get that better, and it sounds like the trend is getting better, but I wonder what we were doing before that kind of put us into, that got us into this spot. And so, again, I guess it's not good to look back, we're going to look forward and figure out how to fix this, and I know, Ruben, you've got this going now, which is great. But just something that is a little disturbing that we ended up on the top 10 list, not a list we wanted to be on. So, I mean, as hard as this is that we're in this spot, I wish we could have done this 10 years ago. I wish it would have been something that would have been put in place 10 years ago to try to force the issue and force the treatment, force these facilities to be built, to get us to be able to put people in, you know, just our homelessness issues, you know, drug, alcohol, mental health issues for our homeless and crime, all these things, it's kind of the root cause of, and this is going to help us deal with, the root cause of a lot of issues that we deal with in the county. So, as, like I said, as hard as this is, I think this is going to pay us great dividends long-term with the success of the programs that you guys are putting together, and I very much appreciate the efforts of everybody, you know, probation, Mark and Jeff in the DA's office. And so, like I said, as hard as this seems like it is, it's a good thing. I mean, in the end, this is going to be a good thing, there's a positive silver lining to this cloud. I know we have to come up with this money, again, hopefully a lot of it is going to go towards programming that's going to help prevent this, bring these numbers down. And so, I appreciate everybody's efforts here to rise to the occasion, right, to deal with this and figure out how we're going to deal with it, just like we did with AB 109, you know, 15 years ago. And in the end, it's going to, it's going to make this county a better place to live and it's going to help a lot of individuals that need help and keep them out of our criminal justice system. So, thank you guys very much for doing this. Sorry, long-winded.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Karen.
Just a comment, I had a briefing recently with our Public Defender as well as our District Attorney and Mr. Imperial, and I just want to applaud the relationship capacity here between our District Attorney and our Public Defender. It is unique, just with that natural divide there between the two parties, but we have the right folks in place to navigate us through this storm. I have full confidence in Mr. Imperial's leadership, I know he's going to, he's going to get us to the point where we're going to be looking good, like Terry says, I'm optimistic of how this is going to pan out in the future, and I just want to thank all parties involved and thank you so much for the information and presentation today.
Go ahead, Pete.
Since you didn't ask any questions, I'm going to ask any questions. I have some thoughts, because I go back to the Community Corrections Partnership Meeting that was probably a year and a half ago, led by our probation chief, and, you know, we had real struggles because that was meant to deal with AB 109, this is an offshoot. So, I would say this is absolutely okay, but we're in a deficit spending mode in the CCP, which is no good long-term, and then we were talking about having to pay these fines, it was $450,000 at the time when we had that discussion, but trying to get down to the root of the issue is there were more, more people being referred to IST. And think of someone coming in, having a mental health crisis into the system, and they can't help defend themselves, so they get sent down a track, and those are the numbers that we see. And I would agree, at the time, we saw that we were top 10, which was not good, but we saw other valley counties, I think it was Fresno and especially Kern, that were coming in with much lower numbers, they were actually negative numbers. And I couldn't understand because the population of the San Joaquin Valley is very similar, I look at that all the time, and so I was alarmed, I used a different word, but I was alarmed at the time because it appeared that the Public Defender was sending more people into the system, which may have been the case, again, but that's the way it appeared to me and seemed logical. Subsequently, the team went down to Kern County to see how it was that their numbers, their referrals were so much lower, and it came back, I think in our briefing, we had a discussion with the DA, the Public Defender and Ruben, just about, you know, they had some things in place to refer people out, it was the off-ramp before they ended up in the IST. Again, I've been told that, I trust everyone out there, and we were missing a component of it. And so, now we're looking forward, I agree, we need to just look forward, get this fixed. The $4 million, you know, that we will get back, I say we're going to get that back at some time, we can't be guaranteed it's going to come back to us, so we have to bring those numbers down as quick as we can in case they decide that they're going to divert the money for themselves to the state hospital. Some people need to be in a state hospital, there's no doubt, and we have an issue that we're going to have to deal with on a go-forward basis of where to place the people, because we have the jail return to competency program, but you need placements and wraparound services for people, and so we have to find that, that's our next quest, and I have complete confidence we'll be able to find someone to do that with the state grant allowing us to look forward. But it is something that's vexing for lots of counties, but, you know, the number that we were locked into was a snapshot in time, but I think, all things being equal, every county was referring the same amount at that time, right? And maybe it wasn't, maybe it was, we were two or three below where we should have been or five below where we should have been, but in the end, it was, it was fair. I think it was, the date that was chosen was fair, and I appreciate the plan that's been laid out, because this is like, I don't want to say it's beyond my comprehension, not beyond my comprehension, but it's beyond my ability to help fix it, come up with suggestions for fixing it. And I think having the three or the four of you working together is actually real positive because most of the time, the Public Defender and the DA are on completely different pages on how to deal with folks that have been caught up in the justice system. So, again, to you, Jeff, and I agree, I wish Jennifer was here so she could hear some of this, but I appreciate everyone working together collaboratively for solutions.
Thank you, Vito. Ruben, Karen, thank you for the presentation. I do have just a couple of questions. Within the slides or the presentation, one of the bullet points was develop residential housing settings to support individuals identified as IST on felony charges. What does that look like? I mean, we're talking about people that have been charged with felonies, and it may be even a question for a DA. How is that, I mean, you think of a residential setting, what does that look like? In the community, next to the jail, in the jail? I mean, depending on the type of felony, I mean, there's, that could go a lot of different ways.
And I will invite Jeff DiGio, our District Attorney, to talk a little bit about the individuals and the types of crimes and the charges. What it would look like is, and again, we're not sure if we need to build out and build out a facility specifically for our county yet. When you look at 30 a year, you're looking at anywhere from three or four, maybe a month on any given basis, somewhere along those lines, that's how many people are going to need residential placement, and the type of placements these folks would be going into would be like adult residential facilities or other residential settings where they'll get both residential care and treatment services. Adult residential facilities have 24/7 monitoring as part of the diversion agreement, as part of participating in the diversion program, they would agree to participate and to stay at the facility, and that would be the initial part of the treatment. So, the residential placement and where these folks go, that's part of the planning process. We don't, again, absolutely know if we're going to need a dedicated facility, there are adult residential facilities throughout the county and throughout the state where we place individuals in these types of programs, so we still got to do that planning. And we'll return to the Board of Supervisors with the details as we go forward. And District Attorney DiGio is here, and I think he can answer a little bit about, from his perspective, the types of individuals and the crimes and the population that this program would serve.
Thank you, Ruben. Yeah, the, what we see in this population, these defendants that we're dealing with, there's kind of a pattern of crimes. It's usually a fight with family members that can get out of hand, it's arson, it's vandalism, some stolen automobiles, you know, things of that nature. So, we're trying to focus on felonies that are typically committed by this group. Anything that's serious or violent, something, you know, that we really would have reservations about putting that person into the community. about putting that person into the community, those aren't going to qualify. And I think, with a number like 30 defendants, we're going to be able to fill that up pretty quickly, just with those lower-level felonies, to make sure that we're, ensuring that this program is successful to begin with. We don't want to put people out in the community that are likely to reoffend.
So I guess that's what I was getting at, there is a baseline felony that, nope, we're not even considering that.
Absolutely, yeah. And that's, we've learned a lot, looking at the sexually violent predator programs learned by the state, and we've looked at other issues that have come up with, with residential placement in neighborhoods, or in certain communities, so we're very conscious of that, and we're, we want to make sure that this program has a very high-level chance of succeeding without that type of community backlash.
Okay, that makes it clear for me, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, and the other question I had, and I just didn't know it, treatment continues until competency is restored, or the legal time limit, limit is reached? I didn't know there was a legal time limit you have to get somebody back to an operation, I guess.
Yeah, there, there's time limits, and, who can ex, I think Chandra might be able to, two years? So, yeah, there, there, it's, it's dependent on, Jeff, you want to explain that one, or? I know there's a, there's a time limit, individuals can be, you know, held at the state hospital, and, once that's passed also, then they've got to be returned and retry, so.
Yeah, there, there's, two years, I believe, is the, is the correct answer, or they can be held, and then they, they return to us, and then we figure out what to do with them at that point. What we typically deal with are people that are returned to competency, and then they are returned to us, and then it's almost an immediate plea sentence, and then they're released. So, and that's when we talked about the wraparound services, and the, the re-entry services that are available, that's another area that we're considering, and really have to bolster that, and make sure that those services are available. We have great partners at the jail, the jail-based competency program, they do an outstanding job, they know these individuals, they've dealt with them repeatedly, and they're really working to, to, when they're released from jail, to hand them off to services, to make sure that they've got that support when they're out of the jail.
I, I know, I'm getting a little bit into the weeds here, but if they're not found to be competent, and they've reached that two-year, they go back through the, the entire process again, back to court, and found incompetent, then it starts all over again?
Then, they're, typically, that's the end of it. They, they are returned, they're not competent, and we have to dismiss the case, and then we look at other alternatives on what to do with them.
Okay.
Clear to refer to treatment.
Right. Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to open it up for public comment. Anybody have public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion or more comments?
I will go ahead and make a motion, approve all staff recommendations.
I have it. I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
Correspondents, acknowledged, received correspondents, refer as recommended on the agenda. Board of Supervisor reports, interview reports, important.
I would be more than happy to. I just want to let everyone know, last week, I went on a Hetch-Heche tour with the Turlock Irrigation District, as well as the Modesto Irrigation District, and the City and County of San Francisco's Public Utility Commission, where we went from the system, all the way from the, the retention basins that they've installed here in TID, all the way up, we went to the Modesto Reservoir Water Treatment Facility, which is City of Modesto, and MID's LaGrange Dam, Moccasin Point, up to Hetch-Heche, and then worked our way back through some powerhouses. Just learning about how the system works together, and the partnership between SFPUC, that was one thing. And, so, I wanted to thank Michael Franz for inviting me, and Steve Ritchie from the City and County of San Francisco. Saturday was the Houston Historical Society, my absolute favorite event of the year, where the Villarreal family and the Hanley-Hatfield families were the longstanding citizens who were recognized. You might remember Pam Villarreal, who was our assistant clerk of the board, that is her husband's family, who has been around many, many years. I think they said that there were like 60 of them went through Houston High School, and they're still continuing. So that was a great thing, I just wanted to recognize that. And today, as I was driving in, I drove by the Transit Center, and we had an agenda item a couple of weeks ago, about the Sheriff's Office doing some enforcement there, I think a couple of full-time equivalents, and I want to tell you that it's noticeable, driving around the place, the difference in folks that are hanging around, that's extremely important, it is the hub in Stanislaus County, and it looks so much better. I would suggest everyone drive by, I want to thank the Sheriff's deputies, and I think actually, Lieutenant Condon, I think has been in charge of that unit, it looks, I think it looks much different, much better. And then Liz King, who was our clerk of the board, had retired, she chose not to come before the Board of Supervisors, which, so we had a little retirement party, but I just want to recognize her, for 30 years of service with the county, she did get her 30, 30-year Service Medal, uh, recently, but she spent about nine years as our clerk of the board, and such an important position for us, not only for record-keeping of the county, and just on and on, but really, for taking care of us. I know that's one of the charges of the clerk of the board, is to babysit us, so that we stay within the bounds of what we're supposed to be doing. So, congratulations on her retirement. And, the last thing I wanted to say, I wrote down, I didn't say anything on the retirement, so there was 175 years of retirements, I mean, recognition today, which is a stunning amount, and the amazing part is they're always thanking us, and we need to thank them. I always want to stop and say, no, no reason to, to thank the board, but I looked up 175 years, that's 1850, and 1850 is pre-Civil War, and, so anyways, in my little five-second while I'm there talking, who was the president? Zachary Taylor died that year, and who took his place? Anyone have any idea? It was President Fillmore, and if anyone in the audience can come up with President Fillmore's first name, you get the prize.
Willard?
Andy.
Willard?
You're close.
Andy Millard.
Oh, that's right, Millard, M-I-L-L-A-R-D, Millard.
Millard.
I didn't know that. It's horrible, anyways.
That's my middle name.
Is it? That's your middle name. That was it. I'll stop now, I'm sorry.
Any others? At, at the, the last Fish and Wildlife Committee, the Stanislaus County Fish and Wildlife Committee, we honored Ed Irs, in recognition of his service and dedication to the Stanislaus County Fish and Wildlife Committee from 1960 to 2025. 65 years of commitment to the ideals of enhancing natural places and improving the wild animal populations that are found here in Stanislaus County. So we got to honor him at that meeting, 65 years as part of, as part of that committee. Unreal. Yeah, so we, we honored him at that committee, took a good picture, and I'm going to try to get him here at one of the meetings, and, so we can honor him too, for that, that amount of time he served. Other than that, that's all I have. All right?
Good morning. So, I'm going to actually do something a little bit different this morning. This is one of those times that when you, when you make a mistake, you definitely need to own it, and as a county organization, we did make a mistake last week that I want to acknowledge. I need to sincerely apologize for the accidental disclosure of what was approximately 9,400 individuals' personal information through the Department of Aging and Veteran Services. We absolutely deeply regret the error, and we recognize it as a breach of the process and the public's trust. I think it's very important for us to recognize that that error did occur last week. This occurred due to an email error that was within the department, and based on our initial findings, this appears to be the result of human error, and it was not a malicious intent, which doesn't absolve the error, but I think it's important to note. Our immediate response from the involved staff was, they did try to notify the 500 recipients that had sent the information out in error, and they asked them to delete that. We recognize that doesn't resolve the problem, but it is an important first step to try to undo the mistake that, that did occur. Want you to know that we are working closely with our outside experts, to ensure that we meet all of those legal obligations that come into play when you disclose confidential personal information. That includes regarding proper notification to anyone potentially impacted. All those impacted individuals will also be contacted directly with information, resources, and guidance to support them, with any kind of breach of confidentiality. We'll also provide some clarionex steps for those, those of whose information may have been compromised in any way. And just as a final note, I know we've already said this before as an organization, but I think it's very important to emphasize that protecting personal information, it's, it's a tremendous responsibility we take very seriously in every single one of our county departments that can, that contain confidential personal information, and we, as always, will conduct a full review to understand what went wrong in this process, how did we get to the point of having just even human error that could release that level of, of personal confidential information, to ensure you that this does not happen again. So I just wanted to start there this morning, and offer my sincere apologies to anyone impacted there. Going on to the legislative report, I do need to report out, in previous, previous reports I shared with you, that the Del Porto Canyon Communications Infrastructure Project was still being considered for potential federal appropriation, that is no longer the case. It did not make the very short list of items that move forward in, through the Commerce, Justice, and Science earmarks list on the Senate Appropriations Committee, so I need to let you know that we were out of the running there, but we will continue to advocate for that project, it's a very important project for our community. And I think all of you are aware that things have been pretty quiet at the state level, as the legislature has reconvened for summer recess, and will be returning later this month. And then my last note is, we are required to read into the record the appointment and salary of department heads, and earlier in this meeting, the board did authorize the appointment of Marisa DiAlmida as the director, or the administrator of our Department of Child Support Services. Marisa will be placed at the top step of the salary band, which is now $222,476. As mentioned in the agenda item, the top step of the band was important, and we also had to do a slight adjustment in the salary band to ensure that Ms. DiAlmida received a minimum 5% increase for her promotion, so that's what the compensation was provided to her, to accept this position. And she will also receive department head-level benefits, consistent with all of their department heads in Stanislaus County, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Jody. All right. Deputy Middleton, thank you for your overwatch, and we are going to be adjourned, but we do have closed session.
Sorry about that. Before I read closed session, I understand that there might be a need to have an item too late for the agenda on closed session. Do we need to have a short break to discuss that, or are we fine to go forward?
I, I would appreciate just a very quick short break, it's a, it's kind of a technical personnel matter, so if we could just talk offline very quickly, and then we'll reconvene. This just needs two minutes.
late for the agenda. So we'll just read the closed session. The first item is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549-57.6. The agency negotiator, negotiators are listed in the agenda, and the labor org, as well as the labor organizations. The second item is a conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 549-56.9 subdivision D 2 or 3. We have one matter to discuss there. Then the board will sit as the in-home supportive services public authority, and they have one item to consider in closed session, as the public authority. That's conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 549-57.6. The agency negotiators are listed in the agenda, and the labor organization is the in-home supportive services UDWA. That appropriate for public comment?
Any public comment?
Yes, we do.
Come on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Stephen Morrow. In the course of this meeting, the, there were some members of the, of the county workforce that were authorized to pay increase, and we just authorized a pay increase for the newly-appointed Director of Child Support Services. I would hope that those percentages that were granted would serve as some type of a baseline in helping in the upcoming negotiations for these hard-working people, who also deserve a decent pay increase. And I also fully understand that, unlike the federal government, we can't print money, so we have to live within our many means. But I do hope that we can look at what has been done earlier today, and help out the folks that are going to be involved in these negotiations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. With that? Word, Jern.